This meeting is held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press. All notices are filed with the Board's Secretary. You're up, Ari.
Tuesday, June 11, 2019. Christopher Avaloni.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Daniel Harris.
Here.
Eric Gallovo.
Here.
Brittany Ashman. Stephanie Henall.
Here.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Here.
I want to remind everybody that this is being videotaped by Asbury Park Television. And just a few housekeeping issues. First, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting for May 28, 2018. 19, rather.
I'll second both.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to carry the Advanced Development Group to July 23, 2019, without further notice.
I'll second.
And let the record show that we've received correspondence from Simmows and Associates requesting a chairman.
Okay, thank you. And call the vote?
Christopher Avaloni.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Eric Gallovo.
Yes.
Brittany, oh, sorry. Stephanie Henall.
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. First up, we have Mr. Gallagher at 1503 Park Avenue.
I guess he's on TV number two.
I wanted to check, do you have all your people here?
Mr. Chairman, negative. Our architect is on his way over, but he was attending his child's graduation from school. So I believe number two on your agenda is ready, and we would be prepared to allow them to go in front of us, and we should be good to go by the time they're finished.
All right. So then we'll switch it out, and we'll take Interfaith first.
Okay.
But I don't know where they are.
They thought they had extra time.
This is really good TV.
Yeah, on the APTV neighbors, we had clarified that those were prior meetings, just in case not on the record, they are probably.
Thank you, Mr. Serpico.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Hunt Perry. I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant. The first witness I'd like to call Patrick Durkin.
Do you think everyone's aware?
He swore. I keep.
You've been here many times.
Yes, indeed.
Oh, and could I remind everybody who comes, who sits at that table to, for APTV to speak into the microphones? I've been asked that. It's difficult for APTV to pick people up.
It's a little intimidating.
It is a little.
All right. The application before you is to...
Well, before you go into the application, state your full name.
Oh, sorry. Patrick Durkin.
And state your, are you employed?
Yes, I'm the Director of Real Estate Development for Interfaith Neighbors here in Asbury Park.
And would you describe for the board what Interfaith Neighbors is?
Interfaith Neighbors is a community-based nonprofit that does a wide variety of things, including real estate development. We run the Senior Meals Program for the county. We operate the Kula Cafe, the Kula Urban Farm, and a number of other projects throughout town. We've been operating in Asbury Park for 30 years now.
Wow, I didn't realize it was that long, Mr. Durkin.
Yeah, we actually had our 30th anniversary last June.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That means you didn't get recruited for the golf outings. I got...
Oh, wait a minute. If that's...
Now I feel slighted.
No, you didn't get slighted. You got off easy.
That's an oversight that can be corrected.
And will be.
And will be. There you go. There you go.
Would you describe for the board the project today that we're talking about today?
The project, let me do one thing. I put my car keys in my back pocket, and that's a bad place for them. The project that we're here before you is to seek a variance, to build a two-family house on a lot that is Zoned R1A. Our planner will talk about how the area and the block that we're on has quite a few multifamily houses, though the same zoning. But the program that we're running is what we now call our Pathway to Homeownership. We have run the program for 27 years in Long Branch. We acquired a property, actually through an estate back in '93, and we've been operating that program since then. We actually just sold that property because after 27 years of tenancies, it either had to be rehabbed or sold, and we decided to sell it, try to move the operation and the program to Asbury, which has been more the focus of our work for the 12 years that I've been with, with Interfaith. The idea of the program is it provides a rental unit for families who would like to buy a house. And they get some counseling, homebuyer counseling, if they can complete their homebuyer, first-time homebuyer training programs. If they need credit help, they can get credit help. And what we do, we charge them rent, and we escrow half of the rent for them to use as a down payment towards a house.
And generally, it's a family that's chosen, Mr. Durkin?
Almost exclusively. I mean, our program and our rental assistance program is all about helping working, poor families with small children in the house. That's the focus of our mission as an agency. So that it's, there's never been in 27 years in Long Branch, there's never been anything but families occupying either of the apartments there, and it'll be the same thing here, on Ford Avenue. So we applied for home funding for this project several years ago. When we did that, the City Council gave us a resolution in support of that application, and it was specifically to build a two-family house on this particular lot. We've owned this lot for several years now. So that's the gist of it. That's the program, and that's the variance that we're seeking, is the two-family. There was some question in the application about lot coverage at one point, and it was, there was a little confusion as to whether one of the decks on the house should be counted in that coverage. We realized that it was, that it should have been and hadn't been originally, so we had amended the application and submitted that some time ago now, to reduce the size of the garage so that we come in compliance. So we are not seeking any bulk variances here. It's simply the variance for the two-family.
Mr. Serpico, this was in the package. Do I need to mark this in evidence? This is the resolution of the, from the City Council.
Sure.
Okay. It was in the initial submission to the board.
So, you know, unless you have other questions, I mean, that's the summary of my...
I have none for Mr. Durkin. Does anybody else on the board?
Pat, these are similar, Mr. Durkin, these are similar to the ones that you did on Dewitt Avenue and on Atkins Avenue?
It's a little different. I mean, the general quality of construction materials used will be the same, but the design is a little different, partly because of this lot. We designed this to fit well on the lot, and also since it is Zoned R1A, we, our architect will speak to this, but we wanted the house to present from the street as though it was a single family. And that's, so it's a little different than the ones on Dewitt, but in terms of quality or materials, it would be very similar to those. Thank you.
How about in terms of the overall project? The emphasis is the same as far as getting the family into homeownership?
Yes, that's one of our missions, actually, is to, you know, we believe strongly that increasing homeownership adds to stability in the neighborhood, so that's been a part of our focus. We have now built 48, a single-family, well, take that back, 45, single-family and three two-family houses in, mostly in Asbury. Some of them were in Midtown Neptune, but they're all designed to do the same thing, provide homeownership opportunities for working, poor families.
How did the families transition to homeownership? How does that process work?
Well, you know, in the time, which is typically a year or two that they would live in this facility, they would, as I said before, have access to first-time homebuyer training. That's a required part of purchasing a home through the home program. If they have credit issues, which is often the case, this period of time while they're renting gives them the opportunity to work with credit counseling, and we work with them to get them that kind of help. And then we try to work with our families after they've moved into a home, if it's in the area. Now, there's no requirement in this program that they buy one of our houses. We're just trying to prepare them for homeownership.
And you assist them with, like, affordable housing as well?
Well, yes, what we're trying to get them into is affordable housing. Everyone that moves into this will be eligible for affordable housing from an income perspective.
Generally, how long does it take before they're eligible to buy their own home, Mr. Durkin?
It's usually a year or two is the length of stay in this program. It, you know, depends on a number of factors, how much savings they had before, you know, they accumulated, as I said, half their rent that they pay is escrowed for down payment assistance. Some of that can also depend on availability of homes, availability of financing. Both the city and the county at times have some down payment assistance money available, so all of those factors play into exactly how long it would take them to be able to buy a house.
So then, once they are moved out, then a new family moves in, and it's cycled over again?
Correct. Correct, yes. And as I said, we've run this program for almost 27 years in Long Branch, and it's been successful. Not every family that goes into the program winds up buying a house. You know, life gets in the way sometimes, different things happen, and the money that's escrowed, if they decide they're not able to buy a house or need to do something else, go back to school, for example, or purchase a vehicle, we've allowed people to use the money that's been escrowed for those purposes. You know, overall, our agency is about helping people, and the focus here is certainly to get them into houses, because we know they're better off owning their house than, you know, being subject to the whims of the rental market. So that's what the program is all about.
If I could have the exhibit? Just want to put that into the evidence here. Mr. Durkin, I show you this exhibit, Mark A1. Would you identify that for the board?
Yes, this is the resolution that I spoke of earlier. When we applied for our home funding to build this house, the City Council gave us a memorandum, or a resolution, I should say, in support of it, and it specifically addresses building a two-family house on this lot at 147 Ford.
Thank you. Do the board have any questions regarding the resolution? Offer this into evidence. That way?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions, Mr. Durkin, unless the board has any else.
Anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Durkin? Anyone from the board professionals? Anyone from the public have any questions for Mr. Durkin? Thank you, Mr. Durkin.
Thank you very much.
Please proceed, Mr. Durkin.
Yes, sir. If you call our architect? Stand up. He's sworn, please.
You swear, affirming testimony during this proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
State your name for the record.
Andrea Fitzpatrick. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, and I'm with Shorepoint Architecture in Ocean Grove.
Thank you.
Ms. Fitzpatrick, would you state for the board your educational background and your licensing?
Sure. Like I said, I've been a registered architect in the state of New Jersey for nine years, and prior to practicing architecture, I was a student at Virginia Tech, where I received my Bachelor of Architecture in 2005.
Thank you. We accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Fitzpatrick, would you describe for the board the lot upon which the structure is proposed?
Sure. I'd actually like to go up to the drawings if possible, but maybe first I'd like to enter this color elevation that I prepared into evidence.
Just give her the one.
Please try to speak up...
Okay, I will.
So that APTV can hear.
No problem. So, as you can see, I'm drawing A1. This is a rather narrow, long lot. It's 50 feet wide by 150 feet each. As Patrick, Mr. Durkin mentioned, what we're trying to do is create a two-family house that reads as a single-family home. So I feel that we've accomplished that in a rather unique way. What we've done is we've created essentially two flats. Each floor is one residential unit, and those units are a mirror image of each other. So on the ground floor, you enter at the front via a front porch, which we believe adds to the street-facing elevation, would be something that would be typical on a single-family home. And then at the upper unit, you enter at the rear. Again, we simply just mirror the floor plan. So as you can see on the first floor plan, on the second floor plan is essentially identical, it's just flipped backwards to provide access at the rear. And one nice thing the rear access does for the upper unit is that it gives you an opportunity, instead of a porch or just something more appropriate for a street-facing elevation, that unit has a raised deck. And that was the item that was kind of in question before with regards to building coverage. So each unit has its own sort of private outdoor space at separate ends of the building, so they have privacy from each other. This deck at the second-floor unit would be fiberglass, so water would not be able to penetrate through it. So it also creates a second benefit of providing a covered entry for the upper-floor unit. So when you come to your house, um, at the front, you have a covered porch for the lower unit, and then at the rear, you have protection via your deck above. So if you're carrying your groceries in, you'll be covered from the elements. You come up a set of staircase and enter into your unit. These units are both three bedrooms. The square footage is are just slightly different due to just the upper unit containing a staircase to provide access to it. But the first-floor unit is 1,232 square feet, and then the upper unit, again, slightly larger, at 1,379 square feet. Both three bedrooms, kind of arranged in the same way, just the opposite. So I think that summarizes the floor plans. Before I move from the A1 sheet, I'd like to just touch on the site plan. We're also providing a detached accessory structure at the rear of the property. This is a one-car garage that would provide one off-street parking space as well as two storage units. And when we move forward to the plan of that, I'll describe it in greater detail. But essentially, this will be to provide storage for the tenants, as there's no basement in the structure. We're also providing a long driveway and two parking spaces at the rear. Again, taking the parking off the street, you won't be able to see the parking spaces from the street. They're fully protected by the structure itself. So even though there will be several people living in this structure, the parking will be concealed. That was the goal. Moving on to drawing A2, which are the elevations of the main house. Again, we've created a simple aesthetic of a double-gable roof that you might see at many homes in Asbury Park. Many of the houses that will be done for Interfaith Neighbors, with a one-story covered-entry porch at the front of the structure, which provides access for the first-floor unit. And the deck/balcony that I described is evident at the side elevation and at the rear. Again, that will be the outdoor space for the upper unit. At the rear of the structure, same, just a double gable, eight-on-12 pitch, nice proportioned structure. It's not overwhelming in scale, and that was our goal. I just, I don't think you'd be able to tell that this wasn't a single-family home while looking at it from the street. Moving on to the accessory structure that I described before, again, if you look at the floor plan I'm drawing A3, you'll see a single-car garage and two storage bays for bicycles and toys and other items the tenants might have. And then here are the elevations of the garage. It's really a utilitarian structure that will be clad and signed in with materials similar to that of the main house.
Is it a permeable or impermeable driveway?
It is a permeable driveway. Oh, excuse me, impermeable. It would be asphalt, so that's what we're proposing here.
Before we go too far, I just wanted to clarify, Exhibit A2 is going to be this color rendering. The plans are going to be A3, and what you was referring to is Page 1, 2. It's multiple pages of Exhibit A3. So for the record, just so everybody keeps straight what we're referring to.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Please proceed.
Okay. I think that is a general overview of the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What do you see the proposed use of that second-floor balcony to be?
I would say a space for chairs. I would say a play area, because it's not overly large, but it's a place to step out and get fresh air and sit and have a conversation. Kind of like a front porch, but up in the air.
And that's, it's eight feet by 12, so it's not very big, right?
It's not, but you'd be able to fit three chairs comfortably up there.
Three chairs. Thank you.
How many, what's the required number of parking spaces?
Three.
And you're providing three.
That's correct.
Okay.
On the second page, what is the rear entrance?
On the elevation rise? So you enter via a door on the side elevation underneath the second-floor balcony, and then you would proceed up the staircase.
So that will be the picture right next to it?
The one right next to it?
Yes, this is the covered area. It's hard to tell in two dimensions, but the door is actually on the side of the house. It's really easier to see in plan. So this is the covered area. Here's the entry door, which is visible from the side elevation only.
But the door is not drawn on the second picture?
Here, there's the door. No. The answer is through the side.
Side.
Except from the back, it still looks like a single-family as well, because the door is...
I think so. I think so. Just like any typical kind of rear condition, where you have a secondary door.
Do you have any proposed lighting being, if people going to be going around back to get into the house?
Yes, we do. All of our light fixtures are shown on the drawings. On the front elevation, it's concealed by a column, but you can still see, I'm peeking through. We have provided a light fixture at every entry door. It would be architectural in nature. So you can see one here of the second-floor balcony, and then at the front entry door.
Where is the HVAC equipment going to be placed?
At the rear of the structure. It would be concealed from the street.
Oh, it's not shown in your elevation, though.
No. Just on the site plan.
Yes. Board has no further questions? I have no further questions of the architect?
How are you directing the overflow of water from where is that headed?
I don't have any topographic information here with me tonight, so I'm not sure right now what way the site is pitching.
Well, wouldn't that, the engineering would happen in resolution compliance. You're just going to make sure that water is shedding appropriately, correct? It's engineer, our engineer will deal with that.
You swear, affirming testimony during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. State your names and your affiliation with the city.
That was upon the board engineer. Yeah, so if that were to be handled through resolution compliance, I mean, to really ensure that the water ran out of the public right-of-way, it would require topographic information, it would require a survey. Otherwise, you know, you'd have to accept the fact that testimony was provided that the downspouts would be directed towards another right-of-way.
I think you would guarantee that, Ms. Fitzpatrick?
In mostly every town where we do a house of this caliber, that is a requirement. The downspouts are directed towards the, towards the street.
But generally, you require a site plan for that, Doug?
I mean, the two-family house is a unique case. They have a compliant building coverage.
And lot, and total lot, like, it's all within our normal coverage ranges, so we wouldn't expect the water to be more significant or less significant than the standard construction.
Yeah. I know, I know we have in the past just, you know, gotten testimony that the downspouts would be directed and the site would be graded out to the public right-of-way. You know, if you wanted us to get involved, you know, it would require surveys to be completed and a few extra steps, but it would be possible.
I mean, I'm satisfied with testimony providing that the site will be graded and downspouts directed.
I don't know if this site can be graded towards the street, because I don't have topographic information, but...
Graded appropriately.
If it is possible, it would certainly be graded appropriately.
Are you also covering landscape architecture, or is that something we can ask someone else?
Well, I think I could cover it.
I see one of our professionals' reports talks about a large tree that's on the property. Do you know what's going to happen with that?
I do not. I would probably have to defer to Patrick.
All right. Mr. Durkin has the answer to some of these questions, so I'm going to put him back on to respond to some of those. When you're done with the... Well, we can, you want to do that?
Let's finish with the architect first, Mr. Perry, then we'll go back to Mr. Durkin.
I think that answer would be contingent on the response to that question from Mr. Durkin.
Does anyone else? Doug?
Just a couple of questions. So in our, in our letter, we asked a few questions about construction detailing. Would you have any objection to adding the public right-of-way improvement details to your plan?
Again, I think that's something I want to talk to Mr. Durkin about.
So there is, there is an existing curb cut, I believe, on the site. Will that be closed?
I think we could, I think we could add those details to our drawings, a curb cut detail, and we could, the standard curb detail, how they patch the existing curb if it was relocated. We can do that.
Yeah, just to cover all the right-of-way improvements.
Anyone else have any questions for Ms. Fitzpatrick on the board? Board professionals, any further questions? Anyone from the public for Ms. Fitzpatrick? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durkin, would you come forward, please?
Yes, just to address the questions about runoff and water. Interfaith Neighbors is a licensed New Jersey home builder, so we're our own general contractor on these jobs, and we've done many of the, you know, many, about 45 houses here on the west side of Asbury Park. We're aware of the grade. This lot is relatively flat, but there will be some grade towards the street, and we will make sure the water is directed that way. The other question was asked about the tree. I don't know what kind of tree it is, other than the fact that it has these small leaves that fall off it all the time.
Sounds like every tree.
Mother Nature's amazing, isn't she?
Since I don't have to rake them, I don't really care about these. But it is our intent to try to leave that tree. I think it's, it's right about on the property line. It should be off the driveway. I don't think the driveway should affect it. So that, and it is the only substantial tree on the lot at this point. So, yes, it's our intent to try to keep that.
So to finish my qualification for it, I'm a board planner. It's a catalpa tree, and it is fabulous. I saw it this morning.
It's probably blooming right now.
It's a catalpa. There are a few in that neighborhood, and this one has lovely form, and it's in good health. It really is, it would be a real benefit to be able to say that. And I'm happy to offer whatever services this one is going to be a construction firm to help you guys figure out how to do that.
I thought you were offering to come rake those leaves.
On the side is my salad. I don't remember the roots are.
I agree that that tree, it's by far the nicest tree. There's, you know, there's some scrub things in the back, but the, that's the only really nice tree on the property.
There is another one in the, in the back corner to the northeast, but I'm not sure if it's actually on your property or it's actually on the neighbors. It's right, like, in that corner. But this one, except the neighbors, kids are enjoying it.
We try to save as many trees as we can. We don't take them down unless we have to.
Yeah, but first of all, it was, you know, winter, so I couldn't be sure if it was in the back. I saw it this morning.
It's a nice tree.
Now I'm going to have to go rake it.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Durkin.
I'll bring my next witness, unless you...
Please do, Mr. Perry.
Stand up. He's good. You swear, affirming testimony during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
State your name for the record.
James Higgins, H.I.T.G.I.N.S.
Mr. Higgins, would you state for the board your educational background and licensing?
Mr. Davis has appeared before, but the town is on board. I'm not going to make any questions. Andy, you should be... The board's...
That's, that's correct. I have, just for the record...
That's, that's correct. I'm just for the record, I'm a licensed planner and estate. Do you want me to just run with it?
Yeah, run with it.
Okay. You've had the site described, you've had the use described, so I don't think I need to go into that. When you look at the master plan, there's a variety of goals in your master plan that I think relate to this application. One is to provide for a variety of housing types for all income levels throughout the city. To develop and implement homeownership programs that as meets to to promote stable neighborhoods and increase community pride. Those are general goals of the master plan. Your housing plan has several goals also, several objectives. And some of those are to encourage and promote greater homeownership opportunities through increased access to mortgage financing and production of for-sale housing. Another one is to provide increased access to credit for current homeowners seeking to rehabilitate housing and first-time homeowners seeking to purchase a home. And you've heard testimony that this, this program actually provides credit counseling to the occupants of these homes to help them get, if they have bad credit, get better credit, have better access to credit to buy a home. So I think it directly goes towards those purposes of your master plan. And then also to encourage development of affordable housing on vacant and deteriorated lots. This is a vacant lot. You'll have affordable housing while it will be somewhat transient where the people will only be there for a year or two while they're getting ready to go to more permanent solution. The house is going to be there providing affordable housing for a number of city residents over a course of years. So I think it meets all of those requirements. The zoning permits single-family homes on 50-foot wide lots, 5,000 square foot minimum. This is a 50-foot wide lot, but it has a 7,500 square foot. So it's much larger. It's 50% larger than what would be required for a single-family residence. And when I look at this, I think you can look at this in one of two ways. You can look at it as a situation where you have a use that is particularly suited to the site and the general welfare is advanced because that use is particularly suited to the site. And I, I don't think, as a planner, I have never come across a situation where a use is more particularly suited to the site because your governing body has said this use on this site is the appropriate use for this site in that resolution. So they have made a finding that the site is particularly suited for the use. When you look at the character of the area, and I have an exhibit here, which and while we're getting that marked, what it shows is it shows the subject site in blue. It shows two-family and more than two-family residences in a reddish color. And it shows church properties, which there are three of them on this block in a purple color. So it just gives you an idea of the character of the neighborhood and what's being proposed here fits in ideally with the character of the neighborhood. On, on the same side of Borden Avenue as the subject site, there are 1, 2, 3, 4. Eight residences that are either two-family or greater. And I think it's six of them are two-family, one's a four-family, one's a five-family. And then if you look on across Borden Avenue, there are five two-families. If you look behind the site fronting on Summit Avenue, there are at least four residences that have two or more residences per unit. So what's being proposed here fits in ideally with the character of the area. It'll be a brand-new house that looks like a single-family house. So when I look at the fact that the site's particularly suited for the use, that there's going to be no substantial negative impact to the character of the surrounding area, I think you can make a finding that there are special reasons and that there is no substantial negative impact. In addition, because of the nature of this use, I think it's, you can make a finding it's inherently beneficial. An inherently beneficial use, then you would have to balance the benefits versus any detriments. And quite frankly, I don't see any deterrence in terms of noise, in terms of the mass of the building. It meets all of the bulk requirements of the, of the zone. So that there's nothing in terms of light air and open space or the mass of the building that would be detrimental. There's be nothing with regard to noise or, or any, any other noise, odors, or anything that would have a detrimental impact on the surrounding area or traffic, as a matter of fact. So I don't think there's any substantial negative impact, and I think that there is a substantial benefit in terms of the, the benefits of the program. So when I look at that, I also think that you could find that, that it's provable that there are special reasons for the granting of the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. I don't have any questions for you. Does anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Higgins? For professionals? Anyone from the public? Thank you so much, Mr. Higgins. I do have a question for Mr. Durkin. Are the families that are chosen for this two-family, are they chosen from families here in Asbury Park already? Do they get their first, come first serve, or are there families being brought in from different towns?
Well, we, we don't solicit to bring families in from different towns. We have always operated on a first come, first served. This is the first we've done this program here in Asbury. We've done it in past years in Long Branch. But our focus is certainly Asbury. And, and, you know, we have families on a waiting list that are Asbury families, so I would expect that the vast majority of families that would go into this property over time.
I would like to make that a condition, though, that it would be a first come, first served for the Asbury Park families.
I'm okay with that. I have no problem with that. That would be our
Can we can't do that?
No.
I think what Jack's probably speaking is fair housing. Creates some issues with that if you say it has to be Asbury.
I see.
But that's, that is where we operate, where we have contact with families that are looking to become homeowners. So I, I think without any particular effort, it would be certainly for Asbury families than for anywhere else. And what I will say to you is, we are not soliciting families to bring them in from any place else. There's enough of a housing shortage here in Asbury.
Which is really my point, Mr. Durkin.
No, we're, we're very aware. I've had lots of phone calls on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Sure, please.
Okay, Mr. Durkin.
Come forward.
I'm sorry. Are there any plans, it's a large lot, you know, familiar with that lot? Are there any plans to fence that property in?
You know, there's a fence on the, let me get my bearing straight, on the north side of the property, that's called Ramshackle. You know, when we get approval, frankly, what I would plan to do is speak to the owner of the adjacent property because that's actually their fence. And I don't want to create a situation by putting two fences side by side where you have an inaccessible area to maintain. But I would be inclined to, to fence the back and that side. You know, the, the side where the tree is, there's actually an open area, and not sure that I want to put a fence there, but I would, I would fence the other side and want to replace the I don't want to be negative towards somebody else's fence, but a fence that's in need of repair, I'd be inclined to replace that with a new fence.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Durkin? Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further witnesses.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Mr. Chairman, anybody in the public want to ask a question based on the subsequent testimony since the last one passed?
I will open it up to the public.
Just you.
Just you, Mr. Manoli.
You're here. It's time to question.
What is it?
Questions, not comments. Questions. And it has to be based on the testimony of witnesses.
Right.
Please first state your name.
Ernest Manoli. He'll like drive Asbury Park. Do you think that this effort can continue to expand in more areas of Asbury Park because
Ask the witness.
Direct that to Mr. Durkin would be your answer.
Yeah, so witness.
Patrick, come forward, Patrick, so I can pick you up on the microphone. Sorry.
I get hearing. I'm not sure that I understand the question exactly.
I mean, do you think this is appropriate and a good use for Asbury land and for the conditions in Asbury?
Yes.
Do you think that you may consider a little bit more expansive area than where it seems to be you're concentrating? I mean, there
Well, you know, this project, to run this program, is just on this lot. We do not have any plans at this point to try to expand the program to multiple locations. Frankly, one of the challenges for housing in Asbury, particularly on the west side, is that there are fewer and fewer lots available. So if we were to have an opportunity to purchase other lots, I would be inclined to want to build new single-family homes on them, affordable homes, so that the people in this program would have some options here in Asbury. That's a challenge. It's been a challenge for the past several years. But I don't, we don't have any plans to expand this program to build more two-family homes for this this pathway to homeownership program on other lots.
Do you have plans to perhaps develop other programs that could target more medium, lower-income families because everything you, I mean, you would agree that everything you seem to submit fits. It looks nice. It's, it serves the community. And would you think that it serves the community more than some of the other larger projects? I mean, it seems like you compared to some of the newer developers are serving more the community and do you think that it's a question?
It's a speculative question. You're asking him to compare. You're asking him to compare his project with some other larger projects, and that's not what he testified to. And that's beyond the scope of his testimony. That's not a fair question. Refrash your question.
Would you consider different programs in a, in a larger scope or area in Asbury?
I don't see what that has to do with this particular application, Mr. Manoli. I appreciate you wanting to question the witness, but we're talking about this particular application.
So you'd agree that this is a pretty nice use of this project's land and it fits in and it's
Yeah, we think this, we purchased this lot with this program in mind because it was a harder lot that would accept a two-family house. You know, it fit, so yeah, this is, we think this is a good use. That's why we're here.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durkin. No, I was thanking the witness. Any thoughts or comments from the board so far?
I think that, you know, the compliance to the overall bulk and coverage requirements is great, and I'm so encouraged to see that you can, in fact, get a three-bedroom house in 1,200 square feet. I just want to go on the record. A lot of people in here who do not get that. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, yes, yes. Also, the lack of incredible internal circulation is, you know
Thank goodness you're on the record now.
On the record. I have some people to send to you. So, you know, I just think you should be commended for, you know, the approach you took to the site and the two-family nature. Keeping it contextual is quite good.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Eric. I think there's a simplicity to this, which we've seen with Interfaith, with most of their projects that you've brought with us, is a charm and a simplicity and a functionality to it. As everyone knows, I'm not crazy about second-floor decks, but this is not a living area. It's not big enough to do anything other than congregate for a very short amount of time. And the preservation of the tree, which seems to be very near this outside deck, seems to alleviate my common fears.
And personally, I think it fits the neighborhood very well. The design and the approach is, I think, admirable. And I personally find it very nice.
I agree with everybody, all of their comments, and I just wanted to add that I was particularly, particularly impressed with Mr. Higgins' testimony with regard to the inherently beneficial use and how this is designed really for affordable housing and how much Asbury Park needs it. I also don't see, I think with the look of the property, with all of the testimony that Mr. Higgins gave, I, I really do think that it's going to have a positive impact on the city of Asbury Park.
Basically, I applaud your efforts again on what you're doing on the west side of Asbury in improving the neighborhood and allowing people to have homeownership in an area where there are probably too many rentals. So I applaud you on doing that and happy to see it being put there on that lot, on that particular lot that I'm, you know, aware of. Thank you.
So I guess we come to I thought we did that already. Okay.
We asked questions. Ask questions.
Then we will open it up to public comment. Mr. Manoli. So I will make a motion to approve the project.
Second.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Eric Gallipoe?
Yes.
Stephanie Henall?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Chris Abaloni?
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Perry, Mr. Durkin.
Chairman, thank you for your time.
Mr. Higgins. I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
I'll second.
7:54 PM. Daniel Harris?
Here.
Eric Gallipoe?
Here.
Stephanie Henall?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
Chris Abaloni?
Here.
Christopher Gonzalez?
Here.
Just for jurisdictional purposes, all six members are eligible, correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Serpico. Thank you, Irene. Please proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Kevin Assadi. I was not here at the previous hearing on this matter. Kevin Kennedy was. He had to be in two places at once tonight, and he asked me to stand in. But I have been briefed on everything that occurred at the last hearing. And, excuse me. So my client's proposal was discussed at the last hearing. The board expressed some concerns about the proposal, about the size of the proposal, the impact that it would have, and in the middle of the hearing, the development team took a timeout, which the board was good enough to grant. And when we returned on the record, we agreed that we would reduce the size of the proposed deck from 20 feet to 16 feet. I'm sorry, from 20 by 10 to 16 by 10, excuse me. Thereafter, some of the board members actually indicated that the size of the deck wasn't so much of a concern. So we're going to talk about the size of our proposed deck in a little bit more detail as we go. But the main reason why we adjourned at the last hearing and came back tonight was so that we could come back on the, I think, the advice of the board or some of the feedback we got from the board was that you weren't seeing quite enough in terms of the character of the neighborhood and some of the other elements that you would really need to consider before you could decide whether or not to approve our application. So we went out and did that. We came back with a lot of additional evidence that you're going to see tonight. And I think what you'll find is that the character of the neighborhood is such that this kind of deck for this kind of property fits like a glove. It fits the neighborhood. It fits the property. It enhances the quality of life, not only for the property owner, but I think it blends right in with the existing neighborhood in such a way that it enhances the neighborhood as well.
I think, you know, one of the considerations we had, Mr. Assadi, was that the privacy loss for some of the other neighbors. Like, that was more the concern.
Yeah, and those comments were also taken very seriously, and you'll see that some of the space that was originally dedicated just to floor area of the deck was now going to be dedicated to privacy hedging that you'll see renderings of. And I think you'll be pleased with not only the aesthetics that that provides, but also privacy for the neighboring properties.
What, what happens if this applicant moves out and the next people move in and they don't want privacy hedges there?
It will be part of the approval. So the, from the, from the proposal is to provide, which you'll see, So the, from the, from the proposal is to provide, which you'll see, the balcony with built-in fixed planters with a privacy hedge. A condition of any approval would be...
And the city is going to have to manage for the remainder of the life of this property that hedges are maintained and groomed and watered properly and taken care of? That's going to be the city's responsibility?
Just like anything else, the property owner, it has responsibilities to comply with their sites, with their approvals. And yes, it, those who are non-compliant are subject to enforcement. But the, what's, what is being proposed tonight, I think you'll see, is not something that anybody would want to get rid of. Nobody's going to want to take away their own privacy. No one's going to want to take away their own aesthetically pleasing hedges. And you'll see that. And you look skeptical, but I, but I ask that you view the application with an open mind and see how far we've gone to respond to the concerns of the board. And we hope that by the end, you'll agree that it's a worthy application to approve. Like the last time, our witness is Rob Feinstein, and he was sworn in at the last hearing. And Mr. Feinstein, would you please come forward?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony gives the attorney's testimony to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Stating it here for the record.
Robert Feinstein.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Feinstein, did you revise the plans that you had presented at the last hearing?
I did.
And do you have new exhibits that we can market?
I do.
Can you please bring those forward and describe what you have?
Sure.
By the way, were these, these plans that you revised, have they been reviewed by the licensed architect that you...
Of course, they're signed and sealed by the architect of the firm.
Please make, make a note of that on the record.
Me? Make a note of that?
So that we know that you're still...
Sure, I, I work for Studio One Architects, and Anthony DeAngelo is the signature on the firm drawings on those documents that I'm providing tonight.
Let's start with these ones.
Okay. So Z2, I don't know if you have drawings up there, it was in about 10 days ago, but as our attorney...
Could you speak up, Mr. Feinstein, so that ABTV can hear as well?
Okay. So the new submission tonight will include, the revised submission tonight will include on Z2, the permanently affixed planters to the deck. The deck will now have as part of the railing detail, the three, three planters spaced apart to cover the entire south and northern portion of the deck. And in between, we install a glass railing. So those planters are permanent to the decks and are required for code, for building code. Additionally, we removed the one-story, one-story, the one-step platform, the wooden platform that we discussed last time with the professionals. So that's the only one that's reflected in, on Z2. So on Z3, we updated the detail to show consistent with the new design, the three planters and the boxwood hedges proposed for the planters. Additionally, this detail shows that we removed the one-step platform in the previous.
Let the record show this exhibit A7.
On Z4, the new diagram shows two things. The planters now affixed to the deck with the edges as proposed. We added additional detail to the shower area, which there was some questions about privacy, so we just kind of leave that detail out and show you that. And what I also did, we have planted arborvitae last season, and these can grow 20, 30 feet tall. So we added an outline, a shadow outline, not the proposed, not the proposed that are installed, how high these plants can grow, you know, on their own, you know, with nothing happening by us. On Z5, there is again the, the detail of the, of the newly proposed fixed planters. And we revised the detail on the fence that represents what it has been installed. We just cleaned up our drawings, a big screen, a fence, different detail that's already been installed. Okay? Those are the...
C side will be exhibit A9. C4 will be exhibit AA.
Additionally, we, we rendered the, the deck to a drone photograph. We retained the services of a drone photographer, and we walked around the block.
Great.
Let's mark that packet.
We'll give them a... I'm sorry. So the deck is, the porch, the second-floor porch is still in dimension 20 feet, 6 inches by 10 feet.
Yes, to be clear. What we...
Your usable space is the 17 feet, 8 inches. Usable space.
Correct.
Right, the planters are taking up...
Some of that usable space.
2 feet, 4 inches.
So the cover of our, I don't know, conditions if we want to pack it.
Oh, no, this is one packet. Yes, A10, exhibit A8.
So 1503, this is an overhead view of the existing conditions as it is currently. The deck has been installed, the key grab is there, and the hopes and dreams of a deck are tied behind it.
I see that you kept the, the lady statue. Is that the only residence?
It's still there.
Yeah.
This was the property when our client purchased it, slightly overgrown, somewhat unkept, boulder fence, et cetera, lots of concrete. This is again where we are today, newly installed fence, the robe arborvitae, configuration of the boxwood, existing planters, bamboo and contained planters. These are the conditions, you know, various rear yard conditions. Again, the subject property 1503, directly to the west is a residence with a long deck facing the client's backyard. There's another shot of that close up, looking west. Looking south, directly out of his window, is this parking lot. Adjacent to that parking lot, going west, is another parking lot, additional photograph will show you, we'll show you that. So what we do with the drones, here, we walk around the block, and we go for similar conditions, to see if what we were asking for was sort of out of line with the surrounding area. This is on Sixth Street, and I'm not on the decision of this is a condo project or a rental project, but that building appears every unit on that building has some form of exterior living space, some.
And do you know if any of those units have a private backyard?
I do not know that for sure, but what I'm saying is that it is additional outdoor living space on an upper level, upper level living area.
Most likely for units that don't have a private backyard.
I, I can attest to that, but I can say sure that's possible.
That one doesn't have a private backyard.
Sorry?
That one, that unit doesn't have.
Do you have an example of a unit or, or any building in here that has a private backyard that has a elevated second-floor living space off, off of it?
This property, again, on the subject perimeter of the, of his property, of his building, I think this is Grand Sunset.
And that's his...
Right, Grand and Sixth.
And that's his front yard or that's his backyard?
Well, he's got a side yard, so he has outdoor space. He has front, front porch, side yard, and a second-floor balcony.
Mr. Feinstein, did you perceive any detriments as a result of that property having that sort of setup?
I, from the aspect of, you're asking him if he sees any negative detriments from an architectural perspective or from a planner's perspective?
Just from any perspective, from a layperson's perspective. I think he, he can also testify as a layperson who missed observations.
No. No. Don't pass out the scope of his expertise.
Okay, fine.
And do you believe that second-floor deck, do you believe that's part of the original house or do you think that was added on later?
Again...
And do you think that's an ancillary add-on to it or do you, do you think that can play?
Well, if there was an ancillary add-on, that's, that's what we're here for as well, right? So that door is there. I don't, I can attest to when the door was installed or when they occupied it or how they occupied it. I'm just showing you that these conditions do exist in the area. On this rendering, this is a shot with the drones, about 20 feet air, looking south. So again, this is a parking lot, that's a parking lot, that's its rear neighbor. The planters are 40 inches high. The shrubs would start at 24 inches high, so we have about a six-foot condition, which would give him, and would give him some privacy, give the client some privacy from the vehicular traffic in both lots, create some form of sound dampening with softer materials and give, give privacy to him and the neighbors.
Mr. Feinstein, from an architectural perspective, do you consider this to be aesthetically pleasing?
I think aesthetics are subjective, but I do think I've got to be what I design. I'll take answer. Yeah, I, I think it's a pleasant, you considering what was there before.
From an arch, from an architectural standpoint, is it generally considered better designed to have some texture to a, to a side of a building or is just a flat wall considered a more aesthetically pleasing solution?
Again, you know...
I, I'm not at that, I'm not sure if you testify to that with any credibility.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're going to help your architect out here on that question. We're going to, we're going to block that answer if you don't mind. You don't have to answer that.
Well, can you answer that question?
I want to answer a different question. I'm going to make one up.
I think you have to make it specific to this site rather than all walls.
Here's, here's the situation, and I, and I, and I respect the board's concerns with what they have concerns with. It happens to be an unusual situation, property, and in its immediate surroundings, to be butted up against this condition, to be butted up against another property. They are sort of boxed in in this area. This is not your typical condition, house, 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 with space in between. We don't have a lot of townhome conditions in the middle of the residential area. We do have larger garden apartments. What I do think is that it is nice to have different levels of living space on the exterior. And I do think it's a very good solution to, you know, to respond to where we were in the last meeting. Meaning, we added some more greenery, softened it up. I think you can tell the effort's been made to create privacy. It will happen next year, but in a few years, these bushes will be higher, the bamboo will be higher, more privacy will be given to both the neighbors and to the client. My understanding, stop me if I step over the line here, my understanding is there isn't existing debt. Debt, that's not my understanding, that's a fact. My understanding is that there are other owners of this property post renovation after the fire that are proposing to reinstall a deck that was existing. And we understand that there's a third-party...
That's hearsay. You don't know that.
Okay. I, you know, we are aware that there was a deck that is now removed, and there is a deck that is, that's there on the property that is there.
Do you know if the boxwoods and the planters have any impact on the noise that comes out of that space?
From a technical standpoint, I, I can't answer that. What I can say is softer materials do collect sound. So the softer material of the plant, like, would, would create some buffering that, I can't tell you, 2 decibels, 3 decibels, 10 decibels, but that's how sound attenuation works. You create a softer, you know, surface, you collect some surface, it muffles the sound.
Do you really think if you have 10 people on that, that you're going to be muffling sound?
No, but I, I will say it again, I don't, 10 people up here, 10 people up there. If he's a bad neighbor, he's a bad neighbor, so...
But, but you're here for a variance. You're here for a variance, you can't forget that.
No, I haven't forgotten. You've got to keep your mind to it. This is just a slightly different angle to sort of see, you know, this condition and why I, I think it's an unusual one in our, in our, you know, bourbon grid or fabric, so...
How many people do you think could comfortably hang out in that proposed deck?
Again, it's a very tough question to, to ask. Russell's face says it. We showed a table. Is he beholden to put a table there? No. Is he going to have a chair, a lounge chair and a cafe table? How many people could fit up there comfortably? I'm sure he could pack some people in there. That's not, I know this client, I don't know, I can say this, I know this client...
Do you know, do you know who he's going to sell the property to next?
No. But variances are granted, in different, various conditions are granted, and that's always the case. Nobody knows how something else...
But variances are granted when there's a reasonable understanding about why you were unable to comply with the existing regulations. This house is not unlivable without that porch. And if the question is about creating better access to the backyard, which is the primary outdoor space, that deck could be a set of stairs leading down to the ground floor to create better access. That's another way of answering the same problem. But when we came, when, when, when you were here before us previously, we asked, we, we asked you to explore different options. And unfortunately, in this configuration, I don't, I see that you've decorated the deck, the porch. I have to remember to call it the porch. It's not different in size or mass at all. It's actually more massive, in my opinion. I mean, it's not viewable from the street, so I don't think the wall makes a difference, but it's, the issue, I believe, was around the size of the living space.
What's the hardship here? Why should we approve this? What's the hardship? I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding what the hardship is. I understand you may want it, but creating outdoor livings, an outdoor living room hanging off the second floor when you have what most, a lot of people in town would call a privilege? You have a backyard, a nice backyard, it's private. Your neighbors have nice backyards that won't be private after this, but I still, what's the hardship?
When you refer to hardship, you're referring to criteria under a statute, the C1 hardship variance criteria. And that's what you're referring to? This is not, this is not a C1...
Or just friendly neighborly hardship.
No, no, well, we're, we're, yeah, sure. And, and we're not, we're not here saying that we have a hardship and that should be the reason you approve the variance. What we're asking for is for an expansion of a non-conforming use. What we're asking for is for an expansion of a non-conforming use. We're here for a very technical reason. It's a, we usually don't see expansions of non-conforming uses on residential properties. Usually you have expansion of non-conforming commercial uses.
We seek expansions of non-conforming uses on residential properties all the time.
Probably for two-family houses and that kind of stuff, sure. But in the grand scheme, it's a very technical.
Or pre-existing non-conforming uses of residential properties in commercial zones. Any changes to those properties or expansions of those?
Absolutely correct. And there's a good reason for the, in a commercial setting, we're expanding a parking lot so that more cars can come in. Here, we're asking for a deck on a single-family dwelling. And it's a deck, it's a deck that people.
It's an elevated deck.
It's an elevated living.
Elevated living space on a single-family property. It's not two-family that doesn't have outdoor space.
Sure.
This single-family. So anyone who's living in here or staying in here has access to the backyard, right? That backyard that's about five times the size of this deck.
It depends. It depends how you look at it. This property, the main living area is on the second floor. So imagine, you're living in your main living area, you wanna go outside and have a couple of.
Can I just cut you off for a second? Because I don't mean to be rude or anything, but I wanted to just mention and clarify that the last time we were here, the applicant testified that the reason why he wanted this use was because he had family gatherings, the kitchen was on the second floor. He had very practical and as far as I'm concerned, credible reasons for requesting that we approve a deck patio on the second floor. So I don't think we have to get into generalities because we have this specific testimony from the applicant from last time regarding why he thought that this would enhance his use of his property. Which frankly, enhancing the use of our properties in Asbury Park is one of our goals. And I also want to point out that although, I'm not that thrilled that it looks a little more bulky, I do appreciate that you took into consideration the noise quality. And also with the size, which I thought was the concern, was how many people could fit on the deck. So even though they didn't really decrease the size of the deck, they put those planters in that I think decreased the number of people that can be on the deck, which was originally, the full length was 20 by 10.
I.
Go right ahead.
With all due respect, I think I agree with you on the credible reasons that the layout of this house is such that the living space is primarily on the second floor. Then to me, the answer is to improve the connection between the second floor and the first floor, not to build another room.
I would agree with that 100%. There is unbelievable available outdoor space right there, so.
Improve the connection to the first floor.
And it's not necessar, yeah, maybe they've decreased the square, the usable square footage. It's still an outdoor room. And the use of it, or the potential use of it, the potential negative impact of it, is you can put a lot of people out there, whether they're sitting at a table and having dinner for eight or a cocktail party for 15. It's going to become, in its worst-case scenario, thinking of the person five.
Five owners.
Five owners, you know, down the line from this nice applicant this evening. That doesn't use it in a friendly neighborly way.
I think, Mr. Assadi, what the board is saying, that it's more of a concern for the future, not so much for your current owner, but the future owners that may impact the neighborhood.
And I find, I'm not seeing a connection between the justification of the living space being primarily on the second floor and the need for the porch. A porch of this magnitude or function.
And I'll even go one further to say that I think a porch of this nature cuts off downstairs, where it's now completely in shadow, and there's no air and no light, and now you're even, it.
I mean, I don't think it's fair to substitute, you know, the board's aesthetic preferences necessarily just because of the shadows and the cutting off.
That's actually air and light and things that I think we try to preserve as best we can.
But there's a shower under there, and so we, the last time they were here, we asked for privacy as well.
Yes, Mr. Feinstein.
Light and shadow, because it is, I mean, as our architect definitely consider. Obviously, we didn't position the house, it is what we could handle with. But sunrise is in the east, starts working its way around to the south and down, obviously in the west. We are fully open to, you know, the sun, we have it. We have this shadow, we had a renderering, it may have picked up, you know, quickly. Obviously, we put these together between our last meeting and now after a lot of back and forths of assets of pros and cons, and trying to find the things that were, you know, important to you as the board, and obviously important to the client. But I can assure you that we definitely have not created, you know, a big shadow blocking device. The building creates a shadow with the sun rising, and as we get out of that, the deck hasn't caused any more. It's just an important little detail.
Can I ask why there's no access to the yard from the deck?
Again, because ultimately, we felt that the stair required to get up from the deck, or down from the deck or up from the yard, was taking up usable square footage. It wasn't so much.
Precisely.
It wasn't so much about the connection to, you know, it was taking the living space and expanding that indoor-outdoor feel on this level where the kitchen and the dining room exist. I am sort of a little taken back confused. You know, in architecture, we like to create different experiences, right? If you have a bar, you have a bar area, sometimes you have a lounge area, you might have a fireplace area. It's no different in a public space or in a home, you have different areas. Sometimes they connect, and sometimes they just sort of visually connect. So the idea that this is an expansion of that floor's living space, just explain, I'm not saying.
We understand program.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure everyone does on the board. I'm just, I'm just responding to what I was hearing. So that is why we didn't make that direct, you know, connection. If you said make that connection, then maybe the board, you know. I think we could actually go back again, I got the, you know, pervert. You know, ultimately, I'm just trying to explain the narrative that we developed for the client.
Unfortunately, I will repeat my position, which is I don't see the relationship to the desire and the solution. That's my position.
This is just maybe doing the dance, but I'll just do it over time.
It's a good dance.
It wasn't our narrative with the client to connect this to this.
I'm not saying it's your narrative. But my point is that if, if you have a backyard, nobody, this is a very significant outdoor living space that you are proposing to add to the building. Substantially increasing by 250 square feet, or 200 or something square feet, right? The amount of outdoor space in the yard. Can we agree to that?
It's 20 minus those 10 deep, so less than 200, but yes.
It's all counted in your building coverage, right? So let's just agree that you are increasing the outdoor space by 200 square feet.
Right.
Give or take, right?
Right.
Okay. Now, there was a significant amount of discussion related to the fact that the, this was born out of the desire to have more connection, more connection to the outdoors from the second floor to the first floor. To expand the sense of being connected to the outdoors, I believe is a phrase that was banned.
Sure.
Right. Now, we have repeated, there has been, I'm not the only person who has expressed concern over the general mass of the porch. I do not see the relationship between, I do not see the necessity of this solution to those two relationships.
Sorry. I think it's maybe nuance, or we're talking semantics. This is outdoors.
I get it.
But that's being connected to down here. You come home from the beach, you come home from surfing, this is one level of space, you know.
Understood. Understood. However, you are here for, you are here for a variance.
Right.
Why should you get more than your neighbors?
What neighbors?
Neighbors, plural, general, the whole, everybody else who has to deal with zoning. That's like, why should, what is this, what, why, why?
That's a fair question to the architect.
It's true. So my position is I do not see the relationship.
More so, that's the question, I get it.
Yeah. I have a hard time seeing the relationship of the magnitude of the solution to the purported problem.
Can I just have a reminder of what the, what the regulations that we're actually considering? Because I don't think I remember reading anything about something being necessary.
No, it's not, I'm not questioning whether it's necessary.
Do you swear or firm testimony to this or any specific stance will be the truth, or truth enough to be true?
I do.
State your name and your affiliation, and just say, Donald or Porter Flatter.
So, go on with your actual question.
I mean, I just want to understand what the criteria is that we're actually looking and supposed to be considering.
So.
This is an expansion of a non-conforming use, which means specifically, they're asking for a variance to do this particular porch.
Understood, but I want to know.
So the threshold is for, they have to kind of be treated just like if it were a non-committed use in some zone, so a store in a residential zone or whatever. And so what you're looking at is what is the nature of the expansion? So it's living area, and it's kind of a semantic argument because it's a single-family house. How does a single-family house have any, you know, negative detriment than any other single-family house? But because of its circumstance as an attached house, it has unique problems. So it's the attachment, it's the closeness to the, to its neighbors, whatever other physical, you know, attributes, as well as those, you know, non-physical circumstances. So, you know, can you?
What?
Are you guys bringing the planner to do planning this night?
Do we have what?
A planner.
Planner.
Oh, I thought you said we have parking.
We don't have a planner this evening.
This evening, okay. So.
It comes down to justifying why should they?
So, yeah, so it's a pretty high one. But I, I mean, I appreciate the nuance that on one hand, you know, it's not expanding, say, you know, a nightclub, you know, in a residential zone, it's a house.
Until they film Jersey Shore Asbury Park Edition.
But at the same time, it's not a house like in these photos.
No, no.
Where the guy on the corner has like, I don't know, 25,000 square feet, right? And his rooftop deck is actually set back pretty far from his neighbors. Looking at that exhibit, though, you know, you're trying to cringe because the guy in the backyard has got a lot of second-floor deck right next to the property line, and it seems like a similar circumstance.
We don't know if that deck was ever permitted.
Yeah, right. Seems like, don't know what happened, how it got there, whatever.
But that's not the criteria for why.
What we have is what we know. This is a non-conforming use. It doesn't meet the specific criteria for the zone. What he wants to do constitutes an expansion. So what are the negative aspects of that expansion? Potentially party deck that disturbs the neighbors and ruins the character of a single-family neighborhood. So I think it's fair, though, that the board consider that, you know, the master plan does recommend that there are going to be changes to this zone, we're going to remove the FMR. There may be other changes to bulk requirements to allow for, you know, the fact that it's attached on one side. And so, you know. Again, I completely understand and support the board's concerns about what happens in the future. As a former Asbury Park resident and employee, whose job it was to go and bring everybody into municipal court who didn't comply with, that's not what you agreed to. Or it's not what the guy before you agreed to. You know, that's a problem. And it's part of being a good neighbor, it's part of why we do what we do with his own code. We don't need to have somebody policing being a good neighbor.
And this would be very difficult to police.
If you start from the beginning, you don't have to have to worry about policing good neighbors. So, yeah, it seems like minutia, it seems like semantics, but the enlarged living area is the negative aspect of the expansion.
Thank you.
If I may, just add one point to that. It has been held in expansion cases, a D1 use variance is, we all know, the highest bar in land use. The highest bar of relief there is in land use. So if you wanted to put, you know, a club or a gas station on this site, that's a much higher standard of proof required than there is for an expansion of a non-conforming use. It's been held that for an expansion of a non-conforming use, even improved aesthetics is enough to justify it.
Russell versus Martin.
Thank you. And that's, and that's not to say that you must definitely approve it just because we suggest that the aesthetics are better, but for the dispensation of your duties to determine whether or not the variances are justified, because we did get questions from the board this evening, how do you justify this variance? Even the improved aesthetics does legally justify, if you were inclined to approve, you would be justified in doing so. So I just want the board to at least be aware of that.
But they would have to find that it actually improves the aesthetic.
They would have to find it.
Yes.
Yes, they would have to find it.
And that's.
And I hope they would.
And that's based on opinion, basically, right?
Well, yeah, and that's your prerogative, you know, and, you know, I'm looking at this now.
And again, if six votes, we need five to agree that it improves the aesthetics and touches the yard.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, it is a category D variance, and we need five yes votes. So we do need one of you two very skeptical board members to change your view on this.
I think the board would be well-served to look at the report from CCLH. It'll characterize the variances that are required, and also it does discuss the holding of the rules versus Martin Hill on page six of the CCLH report. So you can corral it in, the technical aspects of what is required, correct? C2 variance is not the same word, as, excuse me, D2 was not the same word. Do I take the report as well?
We're looking at the April 16th report?
No, April 16th, 2019.
Yes, got it.
Characterizes the bases that are in part, because there's other bulk variances.
Well, not necessarily, because they moved the roof down, so.
There's no.
The shower?
No, the platform, the stage.
So you still have some other bulk variances. Yeah, you still have some other bulk variances that have to be considered in the criteria.
And we haven't, so we haven't actually recalculated the building coverage based on the wall of that deck. I think it was.
I think that was eliminated, correct?
We eliminated door or less.
Have you recalculated your building coverage?
They did those numbers.
So what exactly are the variances?
The board, the application, other than a D2 expansion of, the setback.
Okay, so you got a bulk setback variance. Okay, what else, if any?
The, it might seem.
Lot coverage to the variances.
We don't know, we don't have updated numbers.
Recalculated this one.
So you still have block coverage, and still a bulk, you got two bolts setbacks. Has the rear yard setback been affected by this?
No, it was not.
Okay, that's fine. So the combined side yard setbacks, are they altered by this, or those side yard?
Not changed from the previous submission.
Now, but was there a variance necessary at that? Was there a variance necessary at that?
Because the one side kicks in both sides, and so...
So then that's still, it's still there. I'm just trying to narrow down what's been omitted and what remains, so that the board understands what they're voting.
Can you explain to me, I'm sorry, in your, on your zoning data chart on your plan set on Z1?
Yep.
Under maximum FAR, you have 0.5%. It seems that there's, these are not the correct numbers to go in that category, or I'm not, I've never seen FAR expressed as a percent.
Well, point, the way I understood it is 0.1.
That's not how it works. You can have an FAR greater than one. So you can have an FAR, like, so are you, are you saying here that 0.5 and 0.74, is that the?
Yes.
And 0.1? You need to correct these numbers.
I was back and forth with the previous zoning board officer and city planner and had conflicting notes.
Nothing surprises me about that. But the way that the FAR is expressed is not, it's not, we can't use that, and it's... That's not properly explained. And then also, the maximum building, so the maximum building coverage has not been recalculated, or is this 31% correct? The percentage under building coverage, that's the correct way to express it.
I never honestly included platform, maybe just the...
Right, so...
So no, so the answer is...
Let's, let's just do a little quick, what's, what's the dimension of your house? 20 feet by 6 inches by 36 and a half feet? Do you have a calculator?
I do.
Okay, so 20, 36.5 times 20.5.
36...
Point 5.
Point 5 times...
20.5.
20.5 equals 748.
Okay, so you got, so that's the number, you have 775 square feet, we'll call that your gross square footage for your building, right, your existing. Now, you're adding the 206 square feet to it, so 206 plus 775...
981.
Divided by 3117, which is your...
Point 31.
Okay, so your, your, the, the value that you're expressing for back building coverage, 31%, is correct, it is in excess. So you're asking for a building coverage variance or a coverage variance as well, yes? However, your zoning data chart needs to be updated.
So could you review what variances are being asked for again?
So it's, it's the expansion of the nonconforming use.
Yes.
There is an existing nonconformity for FAR, but we're not saying that it's a...
It's not.
It's a requirement. Because of the, where the deck is located, it's expanding the side yard setback variance on the zero side, so side yard setback. So, so that's still going to be the combined side yard setback, so it's one side and the combined. And then the building coverage, which is limited to 25%, so I'll just confirm, it's at 31, so that's building coverage. Do we have, go over to the accessory variance? Yeah, so, oh, so the HVAC, the relocation, I think is also a variance, right? But those are already existing, they're in the photographs. Well, he's adding.
Those are, they, he went through a renovation.
They're there now, but that you only had one originally, he added a second one, which got relocated.
Correct, correct.
So...
And they're not shown in your renderings.
You have to get permission for that, so technically, he needs the setback variance for the HVAC.
I think, Mr. Assadi, you're going to, you're having difficulty getting some positive criteria for the application approved, from what I can see from my colleagues. At this point, I, I don't know how you would like to proceed.
Can we have a three-minute break so we can convene?
I will take a five-minute recess, I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Are we ready, Mr. Assadi?
Yes, sir.
Uh, one second.
I'm sorry.
Irina, could you please...
It is 8:56 PM. Christopher Avaloni.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Daniel Harris.
Here.
Eric Gallipoe.
Here.
Stephanie Hunnell.
Here.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Here. Mr. Assadi.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, after discussing with our development team and the discussion that took place earlier with the board, we'd like to adjourn this evening so that we'd have an opportunity to go back to the drawing board a little bit, maybe make some modifications, and come back with, with some new information, slightly different application perhaps.
I see no objection to that, Mr. Assadi.
Okay.
We just have to find an appropriate date for everybody.
Well, let them figure out their plans.
We, you got anything to call on record with the time of the MLUL?
The applicant waves the board's time to act under the MLUL, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to discuss the future date?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we have to carry it to a date.
Um, we can carry to July 23.
What do we have right now on the 23rd?
Just two applicants.
Just two applicants, that's fine. Is that agreeable?
If you're going to make substantial revisions, you know, we need to have plenty of leave terms so we can respond.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. What do you mean by, usually, at least ten, or is it more?
We give our reports almost 10 days before. We usually do three weeks before.
August 6.
We only have one meeting in August, which is August 6.
Right, yes.
It'll be the next...
Is that more appropriate, August 6?
Yeah, I'll be out of state.
You wouldn't be available for July 23, is that what you're saying, Mr. Feinstein?
Yes.
Okay, August 6?
August 6, that's good.
All right, so I'll make a motion to carry the Gallagher application, 1503 Park Avenue, to August 6, 2019.
Chairman, may I?
Without further notice.
Thank you. Without further notice.
All the lawyers are thinking the same thing at the same time. Okay.
The motion.
I made a motion.
Christopher made a motion, Eric seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Assadi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feinstein, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Kennedy. And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.